Good evening, everyone. Seeing 601, I would like to call to order this meeting of the Free Town Lakeville School Committee on April 7th, 2025. Renee, may I have a roll call?
Courtney Brightman.
Here.
Bob Clark.
Here.
Jen Blum.
Here.
Steve Sylvia.
Here.
Melinda Richards.
Up here.
Kristalene.
Here.
Tim Emery.
Here.
And Carolina Hernandez is not. Thank you. If you'd all be kind enough to join me on the pledge of flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I see Lake Kim is here. Thank you as always, Lake Kim. Is there anyone else who is recording the meeting tonight? Seeing none.
Madam Chair, we have guests here to do a presentation. So I'd like to make a motion that we move the Lynch-Marini Auditor's Report and we swap that out with the Student Representative Report so that our guests can present and then not have to sit through the whole meeting.
Okay.
So.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. Oh, discussion, sorry, sorry. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. So we're going to move our audit report up. Please, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Rob Lynch. This is Grady Connor with Lynch-Marini &amp; Associates. We've conducted the audit for the district for fiscal year '24, and we'll just give you a brief overview of it. Grady and I have both, for pretty much our entire public accounting careers, which has been decades and a long time, have been performing municipal audits. And as a firm, we go through a peer review, and we're very proud that we do not receive any findings in our peer review. It's where another firm comes in and looks at our audit work papers. But Grady's the partner in charge of our municipal audit practice, and so I'll let him give you an overview of it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So for the year ending June 30, '24, the district's financial statements, we issued what is referred to as an unmodified opinion on the district's financial statements, which means that in our professional judgment, users of the financial statements can rely on the financial statements of the district. During the audit, in accordance with government auditing standards, we issue a report on financial reporting and internal controls. We did report a material weakness in financial reporting, which was also reflected in the 2023 report, which referred to untimely monitoring and closeout of the district's financial statements. Based upon management's follow-up on those, in my conversations with the Director of Finance, it appears that the district has been implementing corrective action for fiscal '25 and ongoing. What a material weakness means under professional standards is that there's a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement would not be prevented, detected, and corrected on a timely basis. So again, the fact that there were a lot of journal entries towards the end of the year to correct missed postings and untimely reconciliations during the year is the reason for the material weakness being reported. As far as the financial statements themselves, the results of the district's fund balance, you know, the general fund again is the everybody's primary concern. The unassigned fund balance is about $2.9 million at June 30 of '24, which is essentially the maximum that you could maintain under the law. Again, as you know, the DOR calculates E&amp;D, and for fiscal '25, the district had to return about $746,000 to the towns through the reduction of the assessments. As far as the single audit goes, again, any entity that expends more than $750,000 in federal money is required to have a single audit, which is an audit of compliance with federal grants. For fiscal '24, we audited the SPED Cluster, the IDA grant, as well as the Education Stabilization Funds, the SIR-2 and the SIR-3. Again, we reported a finding in regards to the SIR-2 in regard to reporting, again, that dovetails in with that at year-end, Jack had to, as he closed out '24, there were a lot of journal entries that had to be made because throughout '24, the grant administrators in the business office weren't reconciling timely, so journal entries had to be made. And again, we did issue a management letter, which really didn't have anything too significant in it. Again, the biggest item there, which kind of dovetails with the findings, is that, you know, ongoing monitoring, establishing policies and procedures should be monitored annually, certainly by management, but also by the governing body, you know, the school committee. So, again, nothing major. You know, we did not report any question costs in the single audit, which is a good thing. So, that's a brief summary. Anybody have any questions?
Sure, I have a question.
Sure.
So when you talk about material weakness.
Yep.
It seems like it's timing issues. So if there's not a dollar value associated with it, how do you determine materiality of that?
Excuse me?
Like, it sounds like some of the material weakness was like a timing issue of reconciling transactions and posting transactions.
Yeah, as I said, the definition under auditing standards is a material weakness is a condition that there exists a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement in the entity's accounting records will not be detected, will not be prevented, detected, and corrected on a timely basis. So again, you're right, that if you're not doing it timely, by definition, that's a material weakness, all right? Because I have some municipal clients where they don't reconcile cash monthly, they do it at the end of the year, and yeah, it might be all reconciled, but they didn't do it all year long, so by definition, you've got a material weakness. Whether the end result is right or not, you know, it's got to be timely. Because something could happen that nobody knew about during the year, if you follow me. Does that answer your question?
I think so, yeah.
Stephen?
Thanks, and thank you, and welcome. I'd like to hear no major issues. On the year-ending '60, '24, this is this particular audit, but you mentioned year-ending '60, '23.
Correct.
There was also material weaknesses?
Yes, because it was similar in the timing. So again, the late closeout of '23, I mean, we really didn't get all the information from the district until February of '24, you know, and Jack was just, hadn't even really started, and he ultimately helped finish up '23, helped, you know, coordinate final information that we needed for the '23 audit, so that wasn't issued until, you know, late spring of '24.
Right.
And he worked, so again, so you're, again, timing issue, right? So if you have problems with the '23, it carried itself through fiscal '24, right? Because again, the report wasn't issued until about this time last year, maybe a little later.
And forgive me, it's just not my world, but if I understand your practice correctly, you issue a management letter to the district?
Yeah, I mean, we issue reports, so again, as far as priority of the reports, you know, the, it's called the Yellow Book Report, you know, Report on the Government Auditing Standards, in the single audit, where these two main findings are, those in the auditing world carry more weight, the most weight.
Right.
Right? A management letter is really recommendations, things that don't rise to a deficiency, you know? So most entities say, where's my management letter? Again, I have a couple where they don't really get one, right? Because things, nothing really rises to a level of, you know, because you can discuss them orally with the governing body and management. So again, things that are in a management letter generally are lower level, more recommendations, housekeeping-type items, best practices. It's the findings that are things that should be addressed, are more important. And again, from conversations with Jack and, again, the responses and what I know to date of what the district has been doing, I think you're on the right path, that will disappear.
Great, that's great news. So I assume there was a management letter in '23, too, with recommendations?
Correct.
And then maybe Jack, I don't know if we have time for this, but I'm sure you've implemented the recommendations of corrective action?
We, as a process, not only for the management letter, but for the material, specifically for the material weaknesses, we are required to create a plan for action, a plan for response. So that plan then is returned to the state so that they have an understanding, and then they check in with us to make sure that we're going through the process, as do the auditors. So, you know, most recently, for example, we were having a conversation about risk management meetings that we're participating in, we're doing, they're internal meetings, mind you, but, and then grant overview meetings that we're doing on a regular basis. But these are, these are part of the corrective action plan that was required as a result of the material weaknesses that we received from the two previous years. We had started putting these, the first corrective action plan, so just as a reminder in the timeline, I started in this position officially on July 1, but was helping in the process in the end of May, in July, because the interim Director of Finance had left the district prematurely. So during that time, we were in the process of getting as much information and all the remaining information to the auditors so that they could finish the FY '23 audit. So we're in the late spring of '24, giving the information for '23 to the auditors. They then presented that audit, which was presented to the school committee last, really it was last summer, it was in the June meeting. Those material weaknesses required a corrective action plan. Corrective action plan was created by my office and put into place. When then the '24 audit, which was effectively, started working on the '24 audit shortly after that meeting, we, the expectation was we were going to get very similar responses relative to the two, because '23 was from the year before and now '24 identified the same issues. One of the material weaknesses did actually, was removed because of the timeliness. One of the material weaknesses was actually responding relative to getting information. So in, for this audit, the information was shared with the auditors in a timely fashion. So that material weakness was removed, but the remaining, the other ones continued because, of course, it was for the rest of the year. And that corrective action plan are the things, the reason, I mean, not just the only reasons, but these are the impetus behind the actions such as the risk management meetings, the grant management meetings that we're doing on an ongoing basis.
Great. And thank you for kind of bringing me up to speed on the process, but more importantly, following through with the corrective action and the recommendations, and that's great news. And to hear great news is great news.
It's all great news.
So thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, so it sounds like we have a corrective action plan in place, and it seems like it's sufficient to address all of the weaknesses. Are there any other control activities or actions that you're seeing other districts or municipalities put into place that we should consider?
I mean, I think, again, as part of which we point out, I mean, again, and as Jack mentioned, I mean, I think, you know, there's no one-size-fits-all entities, right? And, you know, as we worked on the audit and I, you know, mentioned to Jack different things, is what you want to be careful of is saying, okay, what's this district doing? We should be doing that, right? It really should come down to you as management in the governing body, performing your own risk assessment, saying, well, what can we do better? You know, where are our risks, right? In addressing that, and it comes back to having those types of meetings and, again, documenting it, and, you know, in auditing standards changing more, and, you know, they're requiring us to look at, hey, what are governing bodies doing, you know? Not just reading the minutes, but from the minutes, what are they doing to really understand what's going on with their entity, you know, rather than just, oh, they're approving the warrant? Well, everybody does that, right? But, you know, it comes down to monitoring the budget, you know, what are they looking at when, you know, a finance director is presenting, those types of things. So I think you always want to look at that, and, you know, it always changes, right? Because what happens in a lot of entities is it's the set-it-and-forget-it method, right? Is they, they put something in place, or they get a great manual, a template from the state or somebody else, and I've got it, you know, they hand it to the auditor, and I've got some that do that, and they're not doing anything in there to begin with, you know? They just think it's the piece of paper that we're looking for. So again, it really comes down to management and governing body, you know, assessing yourself. So again, if there were anything big, major, we'd have it in the report, and those are the things that we do have as the findings, and again, I think, I think they're being addressed.
For the benefit of the school committee, I will also forward you a copy of the corrective action plan as well.
Thank you, Jen. Any other questions? Go ahead.
I had a quick follow-up. You had mentioned, in reference to the '24 audit, numbers from '23 also. Was your firm, did we do an audit, to the best of our knowledge, of the '23, '22, '21 years?
The district has had an annual audit every year.
Okay, so looking back further than just one fiscal year, maybe two, are there significant changes you've seen there?
Yeah, in regards to, in regards to what, I guess, the district has not had, they've always had an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the opinion that everybody wants, right? That people can rely on your financial statements. As far as the findings, no, that really came in with '23. And again, I think part of that is changeover in personnel, and I see that a lot, I've got that in a couple of other entities right now, is similar situations where, you know, the business office has significant turnover and things fall behind. Again, it is what it is, right? You know, so as an auditor, we've got to say that, and we do say that there's turnover, and we did say that in '23. But again, it is what it is, you know? So again, that's why it comes back to, in those instances, making sure that the policies, procedures that the entity establishes can carry on regardless of turnover. You know, that the wheel keeps spinning, right? Thank you. You're welcome.
Sorry, and this is really for me. So the gold standard seems to be the unmodified standard rating, and that's what this audit presents?
For the financial statements.
So if you could translate to school talk, that's like getting an A?
Yeah, I guess so.
Right.
Great.
So great job, Jack.
That's great job, yes.
Thank you for the translation.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you very much, we appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
I hope you answered all the questions. Okay, before we move on, my apologies for not acknowledging our administration at the table prior, so with us also tonight, we have Jack Higgins, the Director of Finance, and our interim superintendent, Dr. Barbara Stockey. Moving on to public input. To participate in public comment, speakers will be asked to introduce themselves, first and last name, to the chair and state their residence. Requests for public comment can be emailed in advance to the chair. When called by the chair, the speaker is invited to address the school committee for up to three minutes to present their material. Public comment shall be limited to items that are within the school committee's authority. Is there anyone here for public participation, public input? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Chairperson's report tonight, I don't have anything to report to you folks, so we are going to move on to the LFRS meeting calendar and events for 2025 and 2026, and that is up for discussion.
So that's your discussion, I think you have copies of that in the packet, and this is your tentative set of meeting dates and topics for next year.
There's actually a larger copy in the back of your package as well.
Easier to look at. And it's my understanding that you would have a discussion tonight about that, if need be, and then at your next meeting, you would vote to accept your calendar.
Okay. One of the things I noticed right off the bat was the April 8 reorg of the FLRS and vote on budget FY '27. I think you might want to consider working at the date when the annual town elections are and potentially moving that before the elections.
Okay, so let's.
That would just be my thought.
If I could just second that, this has come up for multiple years now, and if there is a change in the membership of the board, it doesn't seem fair that people walk into a budget vote. So you make a great point, Ms. Brightman.
Okay. I would, I would third or fourth that. Coming in this year in a contentious state, and in conversations, it has come up, yeah, I agree 100%. We need to reconsider, the whole budget process should be moved up probably three or four weeks so that it concludes prior to the election, and it's with the current board.
Do you need to do a motion for that? Or can we just kind of look that over, correct it, and then have it for the next meeting?
That's what we could do.
The first read.
This is just your first read of it. If you take those suggestions back, we can present to you an updated calendar that reflects those requests at the next meeting, and then you could, you could discuss at that meeting and likely vote at that meeting, or you could discuss and then vote at the June meeting.
Okay, excellent.
And just for further clarification, you give a good press, but I don't know that the whole process of the budget needs to be moved up. It's really, by the time we do the hearing and the final vote, it shouldn't be put on new members. But the process somehow lines up with the state and some of the towns and other things, so just really that vote meeting, in my opinion.
Is there anything that pops out to anybody else?
Well, isn't the vote supposed to be done by the end of March?
No, it just has to be the number of days prior to the meeting, to the, to town meeting.
I think it's 45 days.
It is 45 days.
We can look it up, though.
No, I'm just saying, probably have to move it way back.
Yes, Bob.
I'm assuming these are all Wednesdays?
Yes.
Tim?
I just, with the budget and how it happened this year, to your point, Steve, if we don't move the start of this, the budget talks ahead, we're looking at only three meetings, maybe in between the initial budget binders delivered to the vote. So it would be, it may be in our interest to just consider the process starting sooner. If it takes three or four meetings worth, it wouldn't be a bad idea to consider moving that to maybe our January meeting to start that process versus truncate it within six weeks total from February till the vote in April, which we should move up to March anyway. Especially knowing there's four seats open, four seats up for election out of our eight, I think come next year.
Three?
Three.
Three.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Okay, so it should be handled, again, to Courtney's point, it should be handled sooner, and we need to, we do need to look at when we start that process, because I don't think waiting till middle of February is going to allow us enough time comfortably, that's all.
I'm just curious, like, how soon would it be, would it be an issue, how far forward trying to move it would be an issue for a proposal?
Yeah, I mean, if we were to add a meeting, I mean, you can add a meeting, but if we had an added meeting, so it's a second meeting in January, we could have it by, you know, effectively near the end of January, which would move us up a week or two, still have the same number of meetings. But I, my only concern about moving too far forward is we use all of that fall time for prepping and meeting with staff and meeting with the directors to gather the information to create the budget. So, and it's that, it's that timeline of the earlier and earlier you create a budget, the less information you have relative to what you need to create a budget, right? We have the benefit in a regional school district of having a little bit more time than the towns, than typical town business managers have, they're doing it in the fall. So, yeah.
Add a meeting in January?
Yeah.
So like, maybe the end of January?
Yeah, it's the second meeting in January.
Just the second meeting, okay. So we would bring back an updated proposal to you next week, which would include an additional meeting in January to try to slide the budget process up once Renee has had a chance to vet the calendar, make sure that works, and then you would take a look at it, discuss it again at the next meeting, and possibly vote at the next meeting, or delay your vote until June.
Yes, and including a final vote on the budget prior to the election.
Yes.
Yes.
So meeting both of those things.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, moving on.
All right, excellent.
I'm always excited to hear from our here student representative, how are you tonight?
I'm doing good.
Good.
Oh, good evening, everyone. We've been incredibly busy at Upon Aquit lately with the next two weeks reserved for AP testing, a total of 217 students enrolled in 462 exams in 21 different subjects. I personally am taking four AP classes with my first exam scheduled for this Friday. Everyone is working incredibly hard, teachers and students alike, preparing as much as possible for the best outcome. We also have biology MCAS for grade nine and math MCAS for grade 10 coming up nearing the end of the month. Additionally, Promised Heart last Saturday with 343 students attending at the Indian Pond Country Club in Kingston. We sent 11 DECO students to Orlando, Florida for the International Career Development Conference, competing in the Hospitality and Tourism Team Decision-Making category, School-Based Enterprise Retail Operations category, Food Operations category, and in the Thrive Leadership Academy and the Aspire Academy. In terms of Upon Aquit Arts, we experienced the annual art show last Thursday with exhibits across all levels, including ceramics, photography, and projects from our Art of Healthy Living and Integrated classes, as well as from our more traditional art classes. Students are also anticipating the second annual film festival tomorrow night, featuring five student-run films across various genres. The films have already been voted on by our film classes, and awards will be presented tomorrow. My friends and I are involved in this process and have entered a film that we are incredibly excited to debut tomorrow night. And lastly, our senior class is looking forward to their last 16 days of school. Many exciting senior events coming up, including the senior lock-in, the senior banquet, the court ceremony, of course, graduation. Thank you all for your time, have a great night.
Thank you.
Good luck on Friday.
Have a good night.
Enjoy your last 16. Thank you for sharing that note, I have a senior at home.
And good luck with your film.
He says it's less.
Moving on to the interim superintendent's report. Moving on to the interim superintendent's report.
All right, well, I will keep it brief tonight, but I'm happy to share that I'm moving along in my entry plan. But before we get into that, I'd like to take time to acknowledge our staff at Staff Appreciation Week, and we've been celebrating across the district with a myriad of different activities supported by community members and PTOs and central office administration. So we want to just give an opportunity here to thank our cafeteria workers, our custodial staff, our paraprofessionals, our secretaries, our teachers, our administrators, our groundskeepers, our central office staff. Please know that you're appreciated and your work is incredibly valued. We've had a little added fun across the district this week with our staff. They've received a daily riddle or challenge coming out of central office. So the teachers have been all the buzz, trying to solve those riddles and trivia challenges each day, just a little extra fun. But thank you for all you do. Thank you, you're representative of the group. And then in terms of entering into the district, I'm happy to report I attended a CPAC meeting. And that was a great event last night. Looking forward to going back and getting some input from our CPAC parents around how the district is being run and their perspective on their students' experience here in the district. The Flem's, sorry, the Grace Concert last night held at F L M S was a wonderful affair. I would like to give a big shout out here to Nick Marera, who was the teacher in charge of that event. We had 100 students singing beautifully last night. And a half hour long, really moving spring concert for our students. And I've had the opportunity to go into a number of classes. You can see the list of the teachers behind me. We've done everything from a Kentucky Derby run outside relay race to reading in the classes. And it's really been a pleasure to get to know our students and certainly to be welcomed by the teachers into classrooms here in the district. So we can thank you for entertaining my report on how that entry has been. And that's really what I have for you tonight. I anticipated this evening's meeting being, you know, dedicated to budget and our next steps with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving right along, if there are no questions for me. We do not have a teaching and learning report tonight. Terry Fleming had a family obligation this evening. We do, however, have a budget and facilities update relative to the budget and a proposed amendment to the budget coming from John Higgins.
Okay, thank you. Regarding facilities, there are a number of facilities updates that I will be providing at our next meeting, but I wanted this to be focused on the conversations we've been having around budget. At the most recent meeting, and obviously it was last week, I found myself going through the process and talking through a number of the steps with you, and I kept referencing sort of, do you remember or if you'll remember? And I kept pointing it out. And it dawned on me, I'm talking about this every day. So it's fresh in my brain. And quite honestly, even though that's the case, I sat down and wrote it all out one day because I was sort of, you know, losing the narrative as I was going through the process. And so I wanted to be sure that we talked through, not only for the benefit for the school committee, but also for the public that may be watching tonight, so that they understand and remember kind of through this process. Because while it's May 7th today, we started this on February 5th. On February 5th, the budget was presented to the school committee with a number of $49,135,217. At that point, that was a level budget. There was no staffing changes, no additional dramatic changes in spending relative to expenses, and there was no increases or decreases to the staffing in the district. Following that meeting, there was a three weeks between those two meetings, even though they were in the same month. If you recall, we had February vacation during that time as well. And in that timeline, we received in central office an indication from the towns that they were going to be, not going to be able to quite support that full number and that they were, they're hoping to see some reductions in budget. Over that time, we went back through the budget to find items that we could find in savings. Much of that had already been done in conversations with and work with the principals and the directors through that fall and early winter. We had started the week of Thanksgiving in that process. But the, we received additional information in that timeline too, which is often the case. We finally got the health insurance percentage increase that we were holding off, waiting for, that had to be, they came to us basically around the same time as February 5th, but it couldn't be integrated into that presentation. So that number was integrated into our value. We had projected a larger number than what the percentage increase was going to be. And then there were a number of other items. And we were able to find through those things, through those items, about $500,000 of additional savings. Mind you, these pieces of savings will affect some of the things that we do next year. If you recall, some of it was reduction in some of the sublines, which, you know, with the expectation, we're hoping that we're not going to need to have the same, you know, sub-expenses that we've had in this current year. But that was part of that conversation that we had on February 26th. But there was no staffing reduction to that point. From that point, from the February 26th, between then and March 12th, when we had our next school committee meeting, the acting superintendents, myself, Terry Fleming, and Kelly Steele, met with the town administrators and town accountants to discuss what the financial restrictions were for the towns relative to their tax levies. And they identified that they would need another $1 million in cuts in the budget in order to meet that, the restrictions that they had at that time. That's when the presentation to this school committee was made on March 12th with the reduction of about 17 staffing positions across the district. That number at that point was a little bit flexible. We have a little bit, we have that number now as a solid number because we have a better understanding of what the retirements will be at the end of this year, as well as some performance non-renewals that took place over the spring. So after the March 12th meeting, there, we received quite a bit of information from the state identifying a number of places where additional funds could be coming our way in the current year in FY25. In that meeting, I shared a number of proposals that we had received from Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools that were relative to regional transportation, to special education transportation. These were funding dollars that we would be receiving this year, but could be carried over into FY26. And it was at that 26, March 26th meeting, that I presented to the school committee the idea of holding, having a placeholder of $400,000 of school choice money so that we could then be able to take advantage of that state money and have a budget that would be able to retain some of the positions of that 17 that we were looking at for reductions. That would therefore mitigated the reductions from 17 to 11 positions. That was finally, on the April 9th meeting, two budgets were presented. One was option one, which was with the 17, without the $400,000 placeholder, and one with the $400,000 placeholder. The school committee selected option B, if you recall, and it was with the $400,000 placeholder, using school choice for that matter. School committee voted that budget on April 9th. And after that vote, school committee asked the interim superintendent to provide options for the use of E and D to amend the budget so that staff reductions could be mitigated more. Budget adjustment then, number four, was presented at the April 30th meeting, in which case $250,000 were identified as E and D to maintain four additional positions of the 11 that would be reduced, understanding that the seven remaining positions would be positions that would be, that would in fact be reduced. Those would not be, though, through budgetary caused reductions. It would be through retirements and the performance non-renewals.
Align with enrollment?
That's right, thank you. And those reductions are aligning with our enrollment needs across the district. We have locations in buildings where our numbers are lower, and staff reductions in those places are a matter, of course, in order for us to be right-sized for our community. So those reductions, as I mentioned, are through retirement and performance non-renewals. So that was the conversation at the most recent meeting. I share with you that in that meeting, we talked, and there was a timeline of E and D, understanding that E and D vote by law needs to be made prior to the end of the fiscal year. And that's true, and I made that statement. However, I think I probably needed to share more with you, which is, while that is the case, these are, essentially, you're talking about four positions and there are four people. And it is the belief of the interim superintendent and myself that if we're going to make these decisions, we make them in the short term so that we can notify those people that if you're, you know, that way we'd be losing their positions if ultimately the E and D is not going to be used. Quite honestly, too, there's a scheduling element that goes into creating schedules for next year that needs to be addressed. And so if those positions are going to be reduced, the principals and the administrations in the buildings need to know so that they can make the necessary plans. That is, that's finishing up to this point tonight where you're having your discussions regarding that budget amendment, budget adjustment number four as an amendment, potential amendment.
Okay, so, I have a question. So going with all the numbers, what is, what would be the total position that would be a reduction? Is it seven, including retirement and performance non-renewals?
There are seven positions that are already not returning next year. We are not seeking to have those returned. Those are a combination of retirements and performance non-renewals. And given their locations and our enrollment, they seem to be a fiscally responsible decision. What you would be voting tonight is to save, so to speak, just those four other positions when you think of the total of 11. Any other questions for Jack?
Yeah, how come there were no reduction in administration? That's, I mean, we always want to get rid of teachers and paras. They're the first ones to go. So why didn't we reduce anything in administration?
I would answer this way. I don't think it's fair to say that teachers and paras are the first to go. We certainly don't want to make, we certainly don't want to make any reductions. I'm not, I don't think reductions beyond what is going to help to right-size the district to match our enrollment needs would be productive. I believe the district to have a sufficient number of administrators at this time, if not to be a little bit administratively lean comparative to other districts, to be truthful. However, we are able to service the populations that we have with the current number of administrators in the district.
We have two, which I didn't even know. Six months ago, I found out we have two assistant principals in the high school.
Yes, we do.
I find that to be a lot, especially where enrollment is down in the high school. I've spoken to Jack before about the four school psychologists. That's excessive. I've said that before because I feel that special education teachers can do a lot of the testing. For school psychologists, what do we need them for? Functional behavioral assessment and neuropsych.
So if I may, just for a second, I actually had a good conversation with Kelly in regards to that. And the amount of work that those four individuals do, they do do a tremendous amount. They are needed.
Well, like I said, the special education teachers can do a lot of the testing.
But wouldn't that be them taking away from?
The school psychologists?
No.
Well, teaching.
Right, that would take away from teaching. That's what I was trying to get at. So I would not want to take away from the teaching aspect of it personally.
But in my opinion, since I've had kids on IEPs, since testing is only done once every three years, I would rather have my child sit with the special education teacher for a test rather than someone they meet once every three years. But also, there's another position in the central office that's a scheduler. That's been a bone of contention for me for a long time, a scheduler in the special education office. Now, I believe everybody knows my history with IEPs and what I do for a living. I work with major school districts, and this is the only school district that has a scheduler. And we are so small. And I literally had to make a meeting today with Holyoke in Springfield. And she said to me, Crystal, I'm going to send you out some dates. We can all look at them and come back with the time. Now, that's the administrator. Why we have someone who is in administration, who schedules meetings, is more important to save that job than to one of these four positions? I'm not sure. I don't understand. There's also apps. I know on my email signature for work, if you want to see me, you can go on my link. You can set up a time when you want to see me. We can do a phone call, we can do a Zoom. So another place that can be cut. Like I said, I don't want to see anybody lose their job. But I see positions that I don't know what their purpose is. And that is one position that I have never seen the purpose for, even when I wasn't on the school committee.
I can speak to a time in the district where we had a composite of three people filling that position, if not more. We had designated schedulers in each building who were assigned either part-time or full-time. I don't want to speak out of turn, but I can tell you that the position was created as a cost savings when we consolidated those other positions here in the district. I believe it's crucial to have a centralized scheduler for special education. There is a requisite amount of paperwork that that person is required to be sending out to families and to make sure that families have a seamless opportunity to schedule. We do have different schedules in every single one of our schools. So when we're working with parents to come in and we're working to make meetings more convenient for them, certainly, and to fit within the confines of a teacher day and a teacher's schedule, I think it's necessary to have one person who's overseeing all of that.
So what is the point of having an administrator?
She's not.
No, 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 no. The position of administrator that we have for all of the schools, why cannot, why can't they schedule their own meeting?
So they're running, they're running the meetings and they are team-chairing and they are also conducting supervision evaluation of many of our special education teachers across the district.
So they cannot schedule their own meetings for the, you've got to be kidding me. What about a calendarly app?
I would say that it certainly wouldn't provide the same level of service we are providing to our parents and our students here in the district. And it would, and it would likely put us behind a requisite paperwork. There are timelines associated with special education.
I understand that. I work on a timeline every day.
Yeah, I would just, thanks for your comments, Crystal. I would only add to that that I think at least it's, I assume it's all of our opinions that we build this budget with the students in the center. And sometimes if you take some of these tasks and push them on to teachers that do direct service to kids, like scheduling or testing, you're taking time away from kids. And we only have them for the hours of the school day. So, you know, you make great points, but I would hate for some of these resource room teachers or teachers, scheduling does take a long time and the paperwork associated with it is pretty cumbersome. But I would hate to take time away from direct service from kids on some of the comments with those positions, is my point.
Go ahead.
I would think if you look at the ratings of where this district is compared to the other districts in the state, maybe that rating, high rating, is due to the fact that we have these positions. And I think we're doing pretty good. And I'm not about to go in with a cutting tool.
I'm not.
I'm not finished.
Go ahead, Bob.
I'm not about to go in with a cutting tool to damage that reputation. I mean, we're way up there. There were a lot of people that are underpaid. And I'm not looking to make cuts as you suggested. I'm done.
We have actually gone down in ratings over the last two years. According to U.S. News and World Report, we've actually gone down. I just see this as a slippery slope if we go into E and D to take any more money. I mean, there has to be an option. Because if we do E and D this year, we save these four positions, what happens next year? I mean, I don't know where the money is going to come from. I mean, we can't plan on having an override. I don't know.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Tim.
I just want to be clear, because I'm not even sure I can still vote on both parts of the budget tonight. But I want to make sure we all understand, we're, we're taking from E and D one time to keep the four positions. And, and maybe we'll figure it out next year, right? I, because I understand your point, Crystal. But the, the bottom line is, we're already maxed out on E and D now, so if we don't spend now, we can't add to it again either. So if we take it now, we save the four positions, the other seven that are being cut, those seven, we're, we're gonna not come, come, come back anyway come September, so there's no loss there. We're saving four. So, so did we go from 16 or 17, from what I heard back in March when I wasn't here, to zero, really, being?
To seven.
To seven. So, okay, so we still have seven, where seven positions are still being cut outside of the retirements and the non-retirements. So my point is, those, those folks, positions aside, those folks, those seven individuals aren't coming back in September anyway.
And we're not hiring those positions.
And we're not hiring more, but, but we're not affecting somebody's livelihood outside of what would normally happen on a daily basis, day to day anyway, correct?
Correct.
So, so it is as simple as we move 250,000 from E and D as a one-time thing to keep the four and then there's zero extra cuts and, and no extra families that are being affected, no individuals outside of what would normally happen on a regular school year anyway that are, that's happening? I just want to make sure that I'm understanding how concise this sounds now versus what, what we had, right? Like, we're, we're moving money and it makes sense and, and everybody should be on the same page now.
And we're moving in a positive direction.
Correct, yes, that's, that's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Like, we're going good here.
This is, this should be a good thing. I just want to make sure I'm understanding it properly, so that folks at home, folks here are on the same page, that this is a, a good playing field we're on now, everybody's together.
I want to ask a very firefiring question for everyone at home. So then those four positions that we would be saving, were those all positions also, they also just, you know, would have been retirements or?
No.
Okay, so that's what I'm looking to clarify. So then that would be changing someone's outcome?
Yes.
Right, because it's four people that will still have jobs that wouldn't have jobs.
Yes, but I mean, it wasn't like people that were going to let go anyway.
That's correct, right. So we are basically saving four jobs.
Yes.
Which we're ultimately trying to do. Go ahead, Steve.
But, Tim, that's, that seems to be a, a great representation of the reality. And I think beyond that, and Jack, maybe you could give us an update, there is some element of a safety net to this amendment where there is likelihood, no guarantee, that the state could back, could come back and provide more monies to districts.
Again, as I mentioned to you before, the, what's happening is that the state is working through this process of the identifying the spending of the one over a billion dollars in the millionaire's tax that must be spent as a result of, you know, the, the structure of it. So those elements are part of the conversation. So there's, there are also in the possibility of additional monies not just coming to us but to the towns with some expectation for them to go to education, quite honestly. Like, for example, smart growth funding that, that could in fact be increased, though no guarantees, but that, some of that's smart growth funding, which is specifically earmarked for schools.
And then just further, I'm correcting, saying that the timeliness of the amendment is key because we can't raise the ceiling to each of the towns at this point in time and therefore this allows us to do what Tim presented.
Correct.
Correct.
Great.
But if, I mean, we wouldn't be raising the ceilings to the town though, no? Because we'd be taking it from E and D.
E and D.
So the assessments would remain what we voted?
Correct. What, what he's, I think, if I meant, I think what you're pointing out is, is that should that additional money come into the towns, then that would then, essentially could be used in, in, to, in place of the E and D after the fact. Their assessments would increase as a result of that additional funding that would be for, for education. And then that would have to, that would be a fall meeting for the towns, not in, not a summer meeting, town meeting.
Could the towns use them, that money next year? Do we know what the timing would be for using it? If they got it?
No, I don't know. Well, it couldn't be for '27, it would have to be for '26, right? So it would have to fall within, it would be money that they would have received, as the same for us, it's money that we would have, we would be receiving and we would have to use in that fiscal year, yeah?
I agree with the comments Crystal made about it being a slippery slope. I don't like the idea of taking out of E and D for operational costs, just sort of on the principle of it. That's just my thought. Yes. Yes.
Hi, Mr. Plonker. Lakeville Select Board, but I am not speaking on behalf of the Lakeville Select Board. So again, I want to note that, remind the school committee that using E and D funds outside of one-time expenditures is fiscally irresponsible and could result in a larger deficit for the fiscal year 27, 2027. This could potentially affect the town's abilities to fund the resulting assessment impact, so I again, once again urge the school committee to vote against this budget adjustment. Thank you.
Mr. Plonker, could you please just do me a favor before you leave and just sign in on the sign-in sheet? Sorry, I try to follow protocol. Any more questions or concerns? Okay, are we doing student services update with Kelly not here? Did you guys have any report from her?
No, Kelly's office.
Okay. All right, so moving on, we're going to hit the school committee, subcommittees and district reports.
Can I just ask one more question? So, like I said, I hate to see anybody lose their job, but it's just really killing me with this, taking money out of the E and D. But, so it started with 17 and now we're just down to?
Seven.
Seven for the retirement.
And, and performance non renewals, correct?
Okay.
Eleven, depending on the vote tonight.
Correct. And eleven, it would be eleven if the, depending on the vote tonight. I think maybe there's some confusion here that these retirements and non renewals were like, we were never going to replace them. These positions, if the budget, the original budget had been presented, as it presented, if that had been able to be funded, those positions would be maintained.
Okay.
There would be potentially a conversation about looking at our enrollment and saying, do we want to make some adjustments to our, to our staffing relative to enrollments? But we are, we are, you know, moving along a little bit faster in that conversation because of the restrictions identified by the towns. So 17 positions were identified at the beginning as numbers. We knew as a matter of course that we were going to get some retirements, we were going to get some performance non renewals, that happens every year.
Right.
Some of those?
We replace.
We replace. So we didn't only have four performance non renewals, but those four of them are positions that won't be replaced. The other ones, due to their, the critical nature, they will need to be replaced and we'll be posting and hiring for those positions. That's the hard part, it's the difference between positions and people, right? We're talking about a reduction of seven positions, as it turns out, we can make this work in the matter of course of retirements and performance non renewals in this year.
And these four positions are needed?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to school committee, subcommittee and district committee reports, starting with the regional finance committee.
No update at this time.
Intern superintendent's evaluation committee?
No update.
Wellness and health committee? No update there either. Policy committee?
No update.
Capital committee?
Nothing.
Pool committee. I'm sorry, did you say nothing?
I said nothing, but I didn't know if Bob had anything to add.
Okay, moving on to the pool committee.
Well, well, we've started the preliminary process of forming our committee, so we're, we're in talks on that and will continue to be in touch with folks who have expressed interest. A lot of it happened prior to the April 7th election for me being on the, the school board, so I'm looking to go, go back to the March interest level and we'll be reaching out to, to folks to continue that process.
Just, were we able to get, I know we talked about the swim coaches and all the people that were part of, that was prior to you, but people from the community that came to the podium that day?
There were a few people who had reached out and expressed interest. Again, we've started the preliminary process to, to get a couple of those people on board. Crystal and I have talked a couple of times as well and there's a couple whom maybe it doesn't make sense to have necessarily sit on the committee, but to definitely have them, have the input and hear what they bring also. As members of the community.
I, I just want to see that the swim coaches are invited and people, the stakeholders that spend a lot of time in that venue.
Yep, we are, so Crystal and I are vetting what we feel makes the most sense. I, I will say that there are hesitations with those who have a potential financial interest by working with the district. There's a couple of emails I'm looking for from March that I don't have yet for community members at large, parents of, of children in the district who want to be part of that. I think the paid, paid positions that directly relate to the pool would, would potentially pose a conflict, right? Because of course they want the pool and, and, and nobody's saying that we don't or do want it, but we've got to make sure there's no conflict of interest in, in the process of, of figuring out what to do with it the right direction.
I'm confused on the conflict of interest, although I probably shouldn't be, but it seems that this is, the charge of the subcommittee is more fact finding, to work with the engineers that are going to do the report, but then make a recommendation to the full committee. So there's really no conflict given there's no voting. They're just going to make a recommendation after they find the facts and have positive discussions about what the future of the pool may be.
And your recommendations are going to be brought to us as a full committee and as a full committee, we are going to vote. So I'm just, I think our big concern here is that there's a, I don't want to say misunderstanding what the pool committee, subcommittee is, what the job of that is, but it's basically to fact find, to brainstorm and to bring recommendations to the rest of us.
So part, part of my question, my, a follow-up, if you will, on the report would be, and I don't know if, Steve, this is something we can discuss because of the policy committee that we sit on, but I'd like to make sure the pool committee has a mission statement and exactly what it is we're supposed to do. Because I, I think when the pool committee was voted on and formed, I don't believe that follow-up was done. So I think it's probably on Crystal and I to make sure that there is a legitimate mission statement for this subcommittee that's been formed and voted on to adhere to certain standards of how a, a committee should move forward.
Yeah, I don't know that that's a policy subcommittee issue. I think that's a conversation with you, Crystal, the chair and the superintendent to shape the mission of that subcommittee.
Sure.
I just don't like the use of the word vetting. I think we just have a duty as a committee here to be inclusive and there were some pretty passionate folks that, that wanted to speak about the pool, but we're not giving the subcommittee the authority to make any decisions, especially financially.
No, oh, 100%.
If anything, the recommendation would be referred to this committee and then probably sent to the capital committee because it would require some intense conversations about financials, which obvious we, we have some issues with.
When we say vetting, it's, we decided seven people and there's like 50 emails. So when we say vetting, it's going through all those emails and just figuring out who to invite, basically.
We would like to see three people from the community maximum and at least, for sure.
Well, we asked Lisa.
There's Lisa, there's you, there's Tim, there's Diane. And that leaves three more.
Yes.
So we would like the other three to be?
Yeah.
Rest.
I'd be, I'd be very open to receiving the emails.
Right, I'm going to.
And interests from prior to.
I had three that I was able to send, but I did.
Yeah, two were the same.
Okay.
But, but yes, thank you for sending those over.
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, so we'll be in touch. It's, it's a very, it's going to be an arduous process. This is not something that's going to happen overnight. The engineering study is not started yet. And so as that process does come to fruition, it, it'll be streamlined to make sense for everybody, I think.
When is the engineering study going to be?
To the best of my knowledge, when we have the funds that we voted on, that the school committee has voted on, when the funds are available. Maybe Jack can speak to it more.
Shouldn't that study be underway?
No, if you recall, we had the proposal and identified that there was the potential for an earmark coming from the Senate for that. We have not gotten confirmation of that. We've gotten some good news, but not, but not official confirmation. So as soon as that happens, we will begin that process.
Do we have an approximate cost on that study?
Yes, we have, you, you received the report.
I don't remember.
Okay, it was 15,000, I believe.
15,000.
Well, I mean, we're in May, Bob, I'm, I'm trying to, trying to get us to, to the end of June. I don't have, I don't, if you have 15,000 dollars floating around, I'll take it.
I'll own my wife's purse. Probably has it.
Okay, moving on, are there any discussion items this evening? Okay, seeing none. We do have a couple of action items that need votes. So do I have a motion to propose the FY '26 budget adjustment, to approve it?
No. Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. Want to do a roll call vote?
Discussion.
Discussion? I always mix up discussion and roll call. Okay, do we have any discussion? Go ahead.
I just want to be clear and maybe Jack can help me. Is this broken out into two parts of a vote where there's salaries versus the overall budget, or is this the overall budget vote?
This is a vote to include E and D to increase the, the value and it would be for salaries exclusively. So this is, this 250 dollars is for exclusively for.
250,000.
Yep, got it.
250.
250,000.
It's a little different, but thank you.
Yes, yes.
Got it, thank you.
I think Crystal would have no problem with 250 dollars.
Okay, hearing a motion in a second. We had our discussion, is there any more discussion?
I just, I know that discussions about staffing and reductions are always difficult. I don't think anybody up here relishes this. But again, I do agree that it's a slippery slope and it feels like kicking the can down the road, because I think we're going to have the same discussion next year.
Okay. Anyone else? Renee, if you can have a roll call?
Courtney Brightman?
No.
Bob Clark?
Yes.
Jen Blum?
Yes.
Steve Sylvia?
Yes.
Melinda Richards?
Yes.
Crystal Inc.?
No.
Tim Emery has.
Outstanding.
Oreyas?
Motion carries?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Second item on our list today is to vote to approve the payroll and vendor warrants from 4:30 2025.
So moved.
Hearing a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
No.
Oh, sorry. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Next is to vote to approve the regular session minutes for 4:14 2025.
No move.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any abstentions? Any opposed? Moving right along. Next is to approve the executive session minutes from 4:30, oh, I'm sorry, that was for 4:14. So another one is to vote to approve the regular session minutes for 4:30 2025.
No move.
Did we just vote that?
No, you did.
4:14, she's breaking them up.
Yeah, I'm breaking them up, sorry.
Sorry, I got confused.
Okay, so I hear?
Motion.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, now we're going to vote on the executive session minutes from 4:30, but to hold from posting until collective bargaining is complete.
So moved.
No. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Tim?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing 7:12 on May 7th, 2025. I would like to move to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
You have a second?
Motion.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not quite, we don't get it, Bob.